Coverage. That is an umbrella. It depends where you are. In South Africa, this universal health coverage, we give a name of national health insurance. If you are in the United Kingdom, they give it a different name. If you are in Spain or whatever, but all of it comes from this understanding of a universal health coverage.
Swede Wof Dulvidir is Universielle Gesundheitszorg of the NHI, an English Verweisungsdaten as NHI, my Afrikaans NHI, National Gesundheitsversichering.
This bill is trying to say all South Africans must receive quality healthcare irrespective of whether they have money or no money in their pocket, irrespective of whether they are young or they are old, irrespective of whether they are white or they are black.
Wat ons bedoel met die Universiele Gesundheitszorg is, dat elke lieve burger in South Africa toegang moet verkrijden tot kwaliteit gesundheitszorg. Dit is ongeacht jouw ras, jouw ouderdom en of jy die geld heet om dit te kan bekostig al dan nie.
For now, if you have a deep pocket, you buy the best ever healthcare for yourself. Doesn't matter whether your neighbor has a challenge with that or your stepmother or your stepdaughter or your nephew. It doesn't matter. Just these resources are for me and me alone. Someone else is going to take care of those people. For now, if you have got the money, you can look after yourself. Therefore, health becomes a commodity that is accessed by that one who has got money to buy it.
Ver nou kan ons zien gesonders is iets wat net kan bekomen word met die persone wat bae het diep zakke heet. Die mensen wat geld heet om dit te kan bekostig. Die wat kan uitgaan en kan betal voor bae die medische fonds. Dit maak je stok wie je wierman is of hij het kan bekostig of nie. En met die Universiele Gesundheitszorg wil ons toegang geven voor allemaal.
The bill therefore is trying to say, let us have a health for all irrespective of whether you are affording to pay for that. In fact, some of you might have experienced in some parts of the country, when you try and access health, they will ask you, do you have medical aid? If you say you don't have, then they will indicate that this hospital is not meant for you. If you don't have a medical aid, do you have 5,000 rand? If you don't have, then this hospital is for other people, not you.
Dit is basis in Universiele Gesundheitszorg voor allemaal. Nou het is een situatie dat sal jy gesondheid noodig heet en jy gaan na een specifieke hospital toe, dan zal helle fia vro, heet jy medische fonds? En als jouw antwoord nie is, dan zullen jy, ja maar hierie hospital is misski nie voor jou nie. Jy kan nie die hereie hospital gehelp word nie. Jy moet misski 5,000 rand en kontant betal om die hereie hospital gedienste word.
This bill therefore says, the Department of Health or whoever the sponsor are raising with us a possibility of money being collected from all of us, especially those who work. We collect money sifak ingoewen in goa into a, on a sack. We put this money in a bag. And that bag has got money before we even go and buy a service so that it's known that there's a bag there for the money. Wherever I go, someone will pay. All I need is to go there and get help and therefore the money will come from the big sack.
Zo ons kan basis die metafoor gebruik van ons gaan een groot zak vat. En ons gaan met die zak bij elke lieve ingaan wat nou werk en kan bijdraad tot die fonds en helle gaan geld in die zak ingooi. Dan gaan hier die zak bae geld insommel en enige en wat dan in die toekomst misski toegang wil heet tot die fondse. Kan dan hier hier groot zak geld toegaan en a door heet word die gesondheid bevoond.
Okay, so in summary, bae health, groot zak, groot. Okay, this, I'm learning. Now, if you go and check the constitution of the country and you read section 27 of that country, it says, health is a right of any citizen in any country. But this talk about the constitution of our country. Health is a right of a citizen of our country.
Wanneer ons kijk na die grondwet van ons land, specifiek artikel 27, word daar een vervat, gesondheitszorg is een rach voor elke enkele burger in South Africa.
Then having said that, the constitution is not silent after giving us those advice. It therefore says, the state must take responsibility a reasonable legislative and other measures within its available resources to make sure that it satisfies our rights. The state must take reasonable legislative processes, which is part of what you are doing here now.
Hier die artikel gaan verder en lees see dit is die staatse verantwoordelijkheid om wetgevende materials te gebruik om te kan verscheker dat helle die oberone gebruik om die gesondheitszorg te bewerkstellig in de bid voor ieder ien.
Yeah. Other people, they say this is like creating a financial protection. A financial protection for all citizens to say, for my health, I'm financially protected. The country is dealing with that.
Man, voor jouw aspeur. Zodat jy weet wanneer jy misski sick rak of jy hierie gesondheitszorg noodig heet, jy weet die staat zal zorg, die staat zal voorzieening maak daarvoor.
Yeah. When I read this and then you'll pardon me members, I'm going to just use this phrase and I know some of you say, you know now Lomok is fucking tosakela. I learned this somewhere to say, the right to life and the right to health supersedes all other rights in the world.
Ik wil nou finish net say dat die rach tot lieve, die rach tot gesondheid, dit is die wif rach van elke enkele burger. Dit is alsof dit alle andere rachte oorstkry.
Yeah. So the aim of this fund is to pull resources into one single purchaser. Because there's a thinking that if you purchase all services from one particular fund, it becomes even cheaper, economies of scale. Instead of buying one panado, you buy a billion of panados and therefore it becomes cheaper from where you, even if you manufacture. So it's a single purchaser of the services that we are all going to need. That's what it is actually rather than now of having multiple purchasers.
Ons wil ook kijk in termen van hulbrune, in termen van die ankoping en verkrijging van hierdie dienste. Natuurlijk, wanneer jy meer ankopen doen, gaan het goedkooper wees. Dit is dus bijvoorbeeld wanneer jy een panado koop, gaan het bae dieerkoos. Wanneer ons een billion panados koop, koop ons soe bae dat helle fonds een beter prijs kan bied in termen van die verkrijging daarvan.
Who then benefits here? Sitting here listening to this doctor Lom, am I benefiting here? Yes, the following people will benefit. All citizens of our country, all permanent residents of South Africa. Now, we must accept international law will compel us, all those who are here in our country with refugee status. Some people with a political asylum status will receive emergency care. Because if she's here as a political asylum and I don't treat her or deal with her disease, then I might as well be ready to get what she got and then it's going to affect me.
So wanneer ons gaan kijk wie kan voordeel trek uit die fonds, kan ons bijvoorbeeld say dit is alle permanente burgers van South Africa wat kan voordeel trek. Maar natuurlijk is daar ook internationale wetgeving wat ook voorzieening maak dat wanneer daar vluchtelinge is wat inkom in South Africa en helle won in South Africa en helle nieuw dienste noodig, moet dit ook aan die diegene gebied word.
The bill expects all of us, knowing that I'm a citizen of South Africa staying in that part, to still register. We need to know that this honorable man is in Oli Sisokata who lives in Daa in World Two so that we can actually understand and indicate where he's going to get his services. Each time there's a new baby, but is now old, is getting grandchildren. If there's a new child in the family, we still have to register that so that we can know who in this area, how many people here, ah so and so, so and so.
Natuurlijk moet hierie burger geregistreerd wees. Jouw naam moet aan ons bekend wees. Jy moet een geregistreerde burger wees. Zo ons kan weet wat jouw naam is, waar jy wonachtig is. Dan weet ons in die plak waar jy won, specifiek daar. Hoeveel plake daar is wat ik kan dienst geheen en precies waar jy ons ina kan verwaes om te gaan verdedie die dienste.
Because this bill is based on primary healthcare, meaning, South Africans, come forward, even if you are not sick as yet, just to check, the same way you take your car to be serviced. You don't only send your car because it is already coughing. You just send it what it is good to do and they come and tell you so. It's based on primary healthcare, prevention of diseases, promoting health. This is where this bill is based on.
So ons kijk hier na primare gesondheitszorg. Jy weet dit anders is wanneer jy jouw kar laat dienst. Jy vat jouw kar gereeld om gedienste word. Jy wacht niet door die kar breken en dan gaan dienst jy om nie. Zo is voor geswekeer op voor komen de gesondheitszorg. So dit is wanneer jy in een dokterte kun gaan om te kijk laat jy nie verder schik word nie. Om is ik dit te kan keer voer dat dit verspreid of ärger word.
The other value of registering is to say, the citizens of World One, Two and Three will use clinic number A. And because there are too many of them, some of them will go to a GP days, doctor days, so that we are all of us covered. So when you wake up, when this is like happening in other countries, you now know who actually is primarily responsible for my health, where I could walk in and complain about the headaches, stomach ache as a GP or at a clinic. You'll be designated where you must be looked after.
Zo wat ons specifiek wil doen, ons wil kijk in die wijkendeindeel. Bijvoorbeeld ons kan say wijk één, twee en drie, helle gaan allemaal bewegen na kliniek nummer A toe. Of ons kan helle verwaes na hierdie dokter toe. Zo dus weet dat is genoeg mensen wat bij hierie kliniek gedienst kan word. Dat al nie te veel mensen is nie en dan nie ander word bae ander kliniek daarna verwaes.
The bill aims to cut down on waking up at home and going to the specialist as a first hospital and waking up here and go to Kimberley Hospital as a first hospital. No, you will go there by referral because a doctor or a nurse or a clinic there has told you, this illness is bigger than me as a clinic. You now get to be referred to a higher centre so that all other minor illnesses can be taken care of there by a nurse. Okay, a nurse is a verprechtstel, isn't it? Ah, I'm still, okay, you go.
Ons kijk na basis hierna, jy kan al die dokter toe en als die dokter zien, hij kan jy nie help met jouw specifieke siekte nie. Kan hierie dokter jou daarna verwaes na specialist?
There's a proposal here that there must be eleven members of the board. A governance structure will be of eleven board members who will be appointed by the minister and those eleven board members will appoint a CEO. Hopefully, both board members and CEO are credible citizens of our country who are going to be corrupt free and not take money and use it for other things as we do see. And that is a criticism that other people are putting forward, not unfounded, because there are people of our land who have been given responsibilities and have used the money wrongly. And now we are starving.
Wat ons wil kan zien is dat is een raad wat samgestel gaan word. En hierie raad gaan elf raadleden he? Dat gaan angestel word hier die minister en dan gaan daar ook aha i b wees. Ons wil natuurlijk heet dat dit goede burgers van die land zal wees wat ook korrupt vrij is. Dit is dikols bae van die kritiek wat ons krij en dit word ook rechtvaardig gesee. Want ons weet daar is al mensen die verantwoordelijkheid gegeen en dan is dit zo dat helle dieer korruptie vanaf die fondse misbreig het.
This bill proposes various committees that will have to be supporting it. Amongst others is what they call a benefits advisory committee to advise the minister what, who must benefit and how must benefit. The second one is a pricing committee, a very important committee that other people don't like or they would not like because for here in the country, you wake up and here clinic A says, if you come here for circumcision, it's 500 rand. If you go to another institution, they say it's 5,000 rand. Now, you can't have one health commodity with such a variance in terms of a price. This is 500 rand here, it must be 580 here and 600. It can't be 5,500. But in this country, it happens. So there is a caving by wanting to introduce what we call a pricing committee. A committee that's going to decide what is the price of a commodity A and that must be a price of commodity A whether you're in Guruman, whether you're in Kimberley or whether you're in Appington. Same all over the country.
Ons gaan verschrikker komiteer is noodig heet en ook voor ons onderstelling in de bid. Die eerste hiervan is wolle ons gaan advies geheen oer wie is die persone wat gaan voordeel trek en hoe gaan lier uit kan voordeel trek. Die tweede is die komiteer wat advies kan gehe rondom die plafond, rondom die prijse. Want ons krij bijvoorbeeld is het zo als jy wil ons na kliniek toegaan voor een besneiden is. Bij hierie kliniek kost het 500 rand, dan gaan jy na ander kliniek toe, dan kost het misski 5,000 rand. Zo is kan nie sika groot prijs verschrikkele he nie. Wat ons graag wil he is ons wil he helle moet een prijs doorstel voor elke lieve commoditeit dat al nie soefiel verschrikkele kan wees in termen van die prijsning.
The bill tells us about accrediting these facilities. The facility, the health facilities in the country, both private and public, will be accredited through a standard that is set up by the Office of the Health Standards Compliance.
Zo hier die faciliteiten moet ook die noodige akreditieren krij. Ons het nou tans word al akreditieren is voor prefaat instort.
Yeah, so as I finish, we'll expect you to come here and make your submissions. There's a table there where you can write and indicate what you wish must happen with this bill. Some of us will understand this bill to be like a bigger picture of what Baba Nelson Mandela started some years back in 1994.
Net de afsluiting hier nog en ons neef helle die geleentheid gehe om te kan praat. Ons het ook een tafel hier aan hierie kant waar helle gescrewe indienings kan gehe. So jy misski nie geleentheid gegeen word om te kan praat nie, dan kan jy ook een gescrewe indiening maak. Maar ons wil he ons moet graag kijk na die grote prenke hier. Hier is voortzetting van die werk wat Nelson Mandela ook in 1994 begin het.
When he became a president in 1994, whether he didn't know whether there was enough money or no money, but he made a very strong point to say, all pregnant women, whether in Guruman, Kimberley, Appington, Durban, must be seen in all our clinics, even if they don't have money in their pockets. Because it was important to save mothers and not find mothers unable to access health facilities because they don't have money in the family.
In 1994 to ei president geword he. Het is gesee al is daar misski nie genoeg fondse beskikbaar nie. Een ding wat hie graag wil he is alle zwanger vrouwen moet toegang heet tot die kliniek. Dit maak nie stok of helle geld heet of nie. Hierie zwanger ma moet na kliniek toe kan gaan waar shainoere gezorg kan krij.
All children under five years. All children under five years. Mother, if this child is sick, just wake up and go to the clinic. Nobody is going to ask you, where is the money? Why are you not paying? So that was saying, we need under five, we need pregnant women to come to our clinics free of charge.
Daar moet ook gesondheitszorg wees voor alle kinders onder die ouderdom van vijf jaar. Zo wanneer jy die ochend wakker word en jy seen jouw kleinke is bae sic, moet jy huykind ommiddelik aan kliniek toegaan zonder dat daarbij die kliniek veel gevraag word maar heet jy geld om jy voor te kan betal of nie.
This bill therefore now is aiming to expand, to expand and not only be limited to pregnant women, to children under five, but it also must cover students at the university. It must cover all grannies. It must cover unemployed. It must cover every other South African, including those I mentioned, permanent residents. So it's going beyond just these two I've mentioned. So that is what the bill in summary aims to say. I might not have said it all. It's a bill which is called eleven chapters. We hope that there has been a discussion about this. We recognize M C Health in the province who has joined us. Thank you very much for being here. We now are going to say to you, Bantubagit, om 29, November 2019. Zo besaal die, zo besaal tolle i, elusen, balan. Ni baasleged inala e Kimberl, zo hambalazit, elusen, nifagela. This is Tad. We are saying, I'm saying Elizabeth, right this up to the 29th of November, we are still waiting receiving written submissions. We'll collect your submissions today, but now I'm giving an opportunity for those who also want to add on by their own voice and we'll open up that space for this to take place. What is going to happen now, in the language of your own comfort, you come to this centre. What you must do, help me with the, give me, get me about ten chairs at the back, put them line up here under this. So, so that those who are waiting, so all those on my left hand who'd like to come up and say something on this bill, we'll start with this team of us sitting this side. You come next to this mic, speak on the language of your choice. The interpreters are here. Some of us are not very good and we can listen to English. Once you go to Sissuto, you need to be a bit steady and allow us to be interpreted. If you also go Africans, we'll ask Ulys to get it into English because we are now recording. So we are recording, noting all what we are saying. Let me by show of hands see members who are interested this side.
Ik wil graag zien hande hier aan die linkerkant, enige persoon wat nou gaan praat. Helle gaan al die geleentheid krij om te praat. Daar is een rij in die middel met tien stuile waar helle gaan in een rij sit voor helle om nou helle stem te kan bijvoeg tot die wetzondap. Zo enigeemand wat nou wil praat, steek jou hand op. Na die voorse ter ikanarteen?
Ja. Moes en suku margenise ngala, sin bonen nonke en fisay ngala. Sunavu omoyaleit, auvugemandju moy. Ngoba ene, so miskret ngala, besesiza ngala. Aukschalen, jy lapo ngba bonne bonkapazem vawakum vuid. Okay, I'm asking them, all those who want to speak from this side, please come to this centre and then, ow. Sekwanene, jalle, omoy suvuge.
Enigeemand wat wil praat, helle moet daar naar die middel toe beweeg. Dit is ook angedei ondauw i kan in die tal van jou keese praat. Ons heet tolkrijnste hier beskikbaar. Die tal worin i gemakkelijk is om jezelf uit te druk.
Eh, yinizanda, imari mfoetu, yakbona mfoetu. Helle peppala hulish, ngati, osufi tal, one, two, there are, there are five. I have got five this side and I've put some ten hand, ten lukusa. Can I see the takers from this side? Number one. You come and become number six there. Number two.
Ja, ons kan ons zien.
Number three.
Dunmal, mmo, is koopprat, nee?
Gena, eh eh eh. All right. Ja, hier. Uban, eh, is there anyone this side who I am leaving behind? Anybody who wants to? So both left and right, you are here. Omagukonomiyos obiati, ukoshiwe, simponeg. So we'll start here with the language of your choice. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Orapele Moraladi. I'm the provincial secretary of Kossatu. We are representing plus minus 56,000 members in their province. If I have to quantify that number, it means for every worker that is actually is in charge of providing for families, plus minus ten multiplied by 56,000 plus minus, it is equal to plus minus 560,000 members. Eh, as a federation, we do welcome the release of the long-unawaited NHI bill. The NHI bill remains the best vehicle to usher in universal health coverage. This bill seeks to establish the NHI fund and set out its powers, functions and governance to also provide a framework for the active purchasing of healthcare services by the fund on behalf of the final users. The bill also sets out to create mechanisms for the equitable, effective and efficient utilization of the funds', resources', in order to meet the needs of the population and to limit undesirable and unethical conduct in relation to the NHI fund. The South African health system is in urgent need of overall, it in terms of its financing arrangements, management and ability to deliver quality healthcare services. There is general concerns as that the health system itself is dysfunctional and that the quality of the health services is poor. Access to quality health services often depends on one's geographic location, race, employment status, income level, gender and where the health system or where the healthcare services are delivered, either in public or in private health sector. The inequality in the financing and provision of health system prevails thus between the public and private sectors as well as provincial and district variation. And this we say, as Kossatu, has detrimental impact in terms of the well-being of our population. The unequal distribution of wealth versus the unequal distribution of health spent in South Africa and the deteriorating state of public sector care necessitates the implementation of the national health insurance. Us is a society that has no option but to master courage, to make resources available to develop institutions and technical capacity and also to mobilize the masses of the people to confront our four concurrent epidemics, compromising poverty-related illnesses such as infectious diseases, including among the others HIV and AIDS and also TB, the maternal and child deaths, non-communicable diseases, including violence and injuries that are sustained. As a federation together with the like-minded organizations, we have for a time, on an ongoing basis, called for the speedy release of the NHI bill as a step closer towards the realization of quality healthcare for many vulnerable groups. Unfortunately, few organizations with very deep pockets continue to fund the narrative that the NHI is a threat to economic growth and jobs. This narrative unfortunately takes us backwards and deny the poor and the working class of their fundamental right to quality healthcare. President Serama Posa is providing leadership here and also stewardship on the NHI implementation process and has reiterated the commitment of the entire South African government to overcome the two-tier health system. Recently, there were findings of the Health Market Report. And as Kossatu is saying, that findings confirm our fierce opposition to the commercialization of health and its consequence on both quality and access to care. And among the key findings that we're noting is the following. Private hospitals. Private hospital facilities markets are vulnerable to collusion from both formal and informal. Private hospital facilities benefit from excessive utilization of healthcare services without the need to contain the costs. Facilities operate without any scrutiny or scrutiny of the quality of their services and the clinical outcome that they deliver. Facilities market has largely failed to benefit from competition because of the concentration of the big three, three hospital groups. There is evidence of significant supply induced demand. Incentives in the private healthcare market promote overutilization. And therefore, in our view, the outcomes of the report necessitate the implementation of the national health insurance, which will create a single public health system for South Africa. The speedy and efficient rollout of the N H I will ensure that we achieve better health outcomes of all South Africans. We view the finding of the inquiry as one of the crucial processes in affirming our belief that privatization and commercialization of essential services produces negative socio-economic effects. And lastly, as Kossatu, we cannot emphasize enough the urgency in the implementation of the N H I in the face of the quadruple disease burden as well as the triple challenge of poverty, unemployment, and inequality. I'm sure comrades and fellow South Africans, you are aware of the recent number or percentage in terms of the unemployment rate in South Africa. We pride and count ourselves amongst the torchbearers in terms of the role that we have played over the years through our policy advocacy and mass-driven campaigns in advancing and defending the N H I and the cost of realization of the right of access to healthcare services to all in line with section twenty-seven of the Republic of South Africa. I thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mthutuzeli Joga. I'm a resident at ward twenty-four in Kimbali. I, I work for government. I am currently a, I am currently a medical aid scheme member. As I stand here, having heard a couple of my colleagues irrespective of the category of their, their schemes, the, the cry is one and the same, that by now, all of us or majority of us, our medical aid schemes have already run dry. The, the N H I, it's a proponent of universal health access, which in its own, it's not just a health issue, but it's a human rights issue, which then makes it without any doubt or contradiction, a constitutional issue which we cannot contest at this level, which then makes me and my family be proud supporters of the passing of eh, the bill and the act to, to become law. In practical terms, the N H I fund is going to close the gap between the rich and the poor in the country, in that it shall establish a fund which shall be a pool of resources that, that, that will come both from those of us who are already paying tax and, 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 and also subsidizing our medical aid schemes. But it's not just for us who are employed, who are going to be contributors to the, to the fund, also those who are not formally employed, but who are running small businesses, who may not be contributing directly through the value-added tax or any other form of tax, but who are spending their money in buying food, which is taxed, in paying fuel, which is taxed, and, and so on and so on, including electricity, which is taxed. So everybody in South Africa will be contributing to, to, to the realization of the N H I. The myth, the myth that the N H I shall drop standards must be disputed without any fear. Instead, the N H I is advocating for quality healthcare, both in the private and in the public sector. Having gone through the bill, I have picked up that one of the issues that the, the bill is making very clear is that every service provider will have to register and must be assessed and receive a certificate of accreditation. So for anyone to, in this case, who is a service provider, to render services, both in the private sector and in the public sector, must have been accredited. So the accreditation will therefore be a ticket to any service provider to provide healthcare. The reason that today there is a, a belief that the, 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 the public health system is inferior compared to the, to the, to the private eh, 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 healthcare, those who are lobbying for that position are also not raising the truth of how much the country is currently spending on private healthcare versus the, 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 the public healthcare. The biggest chunk of the GDP in the health sector is going private because there is no proper regulation in terms of pricing and, 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 and the provision of services. Chairperson, let's take, let's take an example in the, in the, in the over-servicing of services that go with the overcharging of services. You get admitted into a private clinic for a chest pain. You, 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 you get seen by a, a, a medical officer. After they had seen you, a physiotherapist is recommended as part of your treatment team. A psychologist is also recommended as part of your, of your, of your, of your treatment team, which are services that had got nothing to do with your ailment, but it's, it's, it's as a result of the deliberate over-servicing of a patient because you happen to be a, a, a medical aid scheme member. Now, the third part of it is this. Tutwits Ban Road, you've got Robert Mangali Sosobukwe, which is a public hospital. On the other side of the road, you've got another facility, which is a private facility. You get admitted here in the private facility, you receive all the services, hopefully quality care, but once your medical aid runs dry, they will put you on a stretcher and push you over the street for the public institution to receive you. With N H I, pricing will be regulated. Services will be based, payment of services will be based on services rendered. Unnecessary servicing of patients will not be allowed. Therefore, Chairperson, in conclusion of my, of my, of my submission to the, to the, to the, to the, to the process, is that myself and my family are proud to support the passing of the bill and it shall free us from economic abuse of medical aid schemes and medical aid administrators. I thank you.
Kilu dumedise eh, Bora Parliament. Kenale, di ntslatte pedit se tarot se kibatla ngo reki hetekachon.
Tatiya dumediisha, someone must stand up for, to, from Sissuto.
Bakaycho, issue of N H I, it has been a long time coming. Marbo tata bu kinalimbo na, buiwan. Khochua ko iri ngi kichongkhoyona, na kilipit marema, kitha oku watwani, Quarantine. Keteropanyana, enyanyana thad, but iyo kamechukidi plasi di ntsi. Se ilongro, khobera ka batwaborunoko khochone. And the challenge ya te kihore, khabakre, tusho ya zapol. Ya nu, enkama jan. Enkama because kili kha le kilimofilding ya khoba an activist ya health, from me khatlonye chwanale Bonapu, Abo Brothers for Life and so forth. And kitle kaba kavale eh, apartment by ya di hospitala, kia pointile kireso kacha. So kenale problem ya khore, mo di issue nsevto tle tze wa, khona sunse kisi timo khetin. The issue ha se government. The issue ke batwaba le mohare, baba re, mbare presentile, government huysadi, sebele chokobatu. Na kyo na problemaka kenale nyon. Na ke N H I eh atla, mafia, kihore, currently as we are speaking, kenal sho, ya horbatin. Baba sese babu zedi sebe, ba shebe lo khore, N H I itlisa engmuri kizin sabon. Whereas the intention ya N H I, ilu kutlisa zapolo okobatu. Na kibona bo tata bu kinalimbo na, ba khore, the intention ya government, li li, the intention ya batu baba nalink, pise khele, ya hotlasa de kitzabon, khaichwani. Ya bo tata ke khore, batu haba chunse batlo khokra zapol, hotlabo khonal batwaba emengale, ba bule li di M C, li di ministera barre, Ronald represent abatu. Marhaoshe ba kothlas, but hakanai information epe ba ekriyan. So kibona bo tata bu kinalimbo na. Now, the question kihore, are di tli nikita Rona chonik? Because kibua ka, out of experience, quarantine as I'm speaking now, hakanai disister number one. Hakanai di ngak, maybe iwan ya la k hospital. And bo tata ba te kihore, baholo ba Rona, ba jigizwa on a daily basis, kote tlaka mushu, tlaka mushu, tlaka mushu. The question kihore, are N H I ready ho ka implement in such, in such areas? Kenale bo tata ba khore, mo komuntye ke tse la mohoyone. Khonal ma zapabo ntsi, are di issues a health? Be it your rape cases, be it your HIV and AIDS issues, be it ma, ma tlukadi high blood and so forth, you find hor sometimes eh, hakanai eh, the necessary medication for batwawansin jaro. Ya my concern kihore, if N H I etlaka kakainyo entle jana, ah, ah, khona khala, khore eh, batu baka khona kwe, amokela, khonali challenge te de chwanale tze wa. Kibona bo tata ba kabu kinalimbo na, kapa ah, khonali se we se setla di ruang, we ensure ra hor disservices tze wa, batu ba di ikhelela, ba di krei. Ka re, problem kio Rona batwawa saze nan ndikolo, baylo kro total kabe itse sepeka N H I. Baylo khore khonu takarona jaka bu ah, re kohu ba narokbathlasa, se khore, N H I beraka in idira eh. Problem kihore, are di services di tlaba de kana na, jani bo.
He started with the greetings and he said that there are two or three problems that he wants to bring to the attention of the committee. The question of the N H I is long overdue and he appreciates the fact that strides have been taken to ensure that eh, N H I bill is being processed like it is being discussed at the moment. He says that he comes from the area called Warrenten, which is surrounded by small towns and there's a very serious problem in that area where people do not receive health services. He says that eh, as we are talking now, there are people who are listening attentively and their intention is not to assist, but is to pursue their selfish intent, selfish intent to fill their pockets with money. And he says also that eh, he has been involved in many health structures. For an example, he has been involved in the board that deals with the health issues. But he says also, the problem is not necessarily with the government, the problem lies with the individuals who are serving with selfish intents. Now, he says that he's got a fear that if H I, N H I is going to be implemented, will it serve the purpose and the intent it is supposed to serve? He says again that there are M C's and politicians who represent the people, but the problem is that information is not disseminated until to the people on the ground. He says that there should be direction and there are no doctors, there are no nurses. In other ways, the health practitioners eh, are not there to service the people. And he says that there are other problems that are related to health, issues like the HIV AIDS cases, the rape cases, they are not being attended to because of the problems in terms of the shortage about the healthcare practitioners.
Ki dumedisa maloku otle, lena kesu kethlaka kotein, kwarrenten. Eh, kenale di pozo tse ilongro re, ah, N H I, ay mama ike misechong, ah, hori, ay tla oketsa di staff. And then in terms of eh, delay ya di services, because the people are dying while they are waiting to, to receive services. And then sesengwe cha apu, in terms of the referrals, even if they have been transferred to, from, to the provincial hospital, batu ho emela whereby there is no specialist, certain specialist whereby chaayo, o ilongro re, o emetsi sejariva, hori, akonoko dirakar wa teyini, and then epe felele za hori motwateyini, uluza botzilo wa teyini. And then sesengwe cha pe, kesa di dokta cha pe, because of there is a shortage of doctors in our country. And then in terms of baba angotlamileba bukiwe from other countries, while motwateyini, onsefale o emetsi sevesi. And then cha pe wi khelele lo hori motaten kanali, even the medical aid. So motwate wofelele za lo hori ne, ulu zitse botzilo. So kese ilongro, kese bo sahora, N H I will provide it. Thank you.
I also come from Warrenten. I've got the same problem that I want to raise is about the shortage of doctors in the area of Warrenten. The other thing that I wanted to put is eh, these are two questions that I want to pose to the committee. One, it's whether N H I would cater for the increment of staff because there are shortages of doctors in the area. The second question relates to whether N H I will mitigate the problems in terms of the delays in relation to the health services that people should be getting. The other issue that he raised is that sometimes people are referred from the provincial hospitals to the other areas, but now instead of getting assistance on time, they would rather pass away because there are no people to assist them. The other issue is that most of the people who are affected by this are those that do not have medical aid. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Eh, tumelang motafuling eh, kaligina kenname shiamole moyengmonchon, mu achi wako word nineteen, Koto Flatella branch of the A N C, eh, Domimo Rebydi branch of the South African Communist Party. Eh, ngarata hu ipita kere, or, I would like to see myself as a friend of the N H I. Because... Because I want to continue pushing for a successful implementation of the NSI. Because it is in the interest of the working class and the poor, if one may say so. We live in a country where, in order for you to get good quality medical health care, you must have money. And the NHI seeks to, can one say, seeks to kill all of that. Whereby the NHI, NHI sees health, health service as a critical. As as a critical matter whereby you don't have to have money to access quality health care services. I would like to speak on three issues that the bill speaks to. One being medical aid schemes. I think it's in section thirty-three of the bill. This NHI bill comes at the opportune time whereby just recently we received, because the bill had concerns of the the monies that the medical aid schemes were charging individuals, of which they were above the inflation rate. And just recently, the competition commission said exactly that, that medical aid schemes are charging more than what they should be charging. In actual fact, they are overcharging. In in fact, I think eh there must be a commission and for inquiry, that the competition commission did that. But I think there must be eh criminal charges laid against them. If one needs, really needs to to take this issue further, because the charges that they are charging people are absurd. And after charging you so many, so so much money, when your funds are exhausted, they don't say, but this, this is a very good customer of ours. You know, let us give him grace period of three or six months. No, it's like the the latter speaker has said, they just put you on a stretcher and take you to the opposite hospital like in Kimbali. They take you to a public hospital whereby you are going to be an extra burden on the state whereby you were paying medical aid eh, we were paying a medical aid scheme. So I think for that reason, the the bill is very much welcomed in that whereby they are going to be now regulated. You know, there's going to be a price that, a certain price that we all charge for medical aid services. You know, unless of course you want to look like your 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 Kim Kardashian, then of course you can pay. But for primary and secondary healthcare, it's going to be covered for everyone, you know. You were not going to be paying, paying, even if you are paying, but that price is going to be regulated. That's what, that's what I like about the NHI bill. That's section thirty-three of the bill. But also, eh there's another section that speaks of financing of the NHI. Eh, we have, we pay, we have companies that pay sixty percent of your medical aid scheme. And then you pay forty percent, you know, all of that monies are going to go to the bill, to finance the bill. Instead of you pay three thousand five hundred a month. And then at the end of the year, you've paid over thirty-five thousand. And you didn't even use that thirty-five thousand and it just goes to them and nobody says anything. And these medical aid schemes are a law unto themselves. That's like daylight robbery. The other issue I'd like to speak to is the issue of of corruption. We do know that with regards to government and the services that they render, especially at public hospitals. Could be also in the private sector, I'm not so well with regards, I'm not so well clued up with regards to the services that they offer at private hospitals. But with government, they source out even toilet paper, it's outsourced in the in the government department. With medical aid schemes, they're going to do away with it. Because you find that, I, as someone who doesn't know anything about the medical sector. But because of I am, I'm black, unemployed, and I see an opportunity to open up a business. I'm going to run with three co's and a tendering system eh in a sector where I know nothing about. And that's where corruption comes in. Because we do know that eh a supply chain management eh, they'll say to you, okay, inflate, inflate nyana here. If the toilet paper is ten rand, they'll say to you, make it seventeen rand man, and then the others will go their side. And that's money that's been wasted, that could have done a lot for the department. Hence, you find that certain departments are in the state that they are in because of that outsourcing. So with this bill, all services that are provided are going to be insourced. You know, that's also creating a lot of job opportunities. As we, as the stats were released just two or three days ago, that the unemployment rate has gone up. So this bill with regards to that is also going to assist. But I would also like to to make an amendment, or before I make an amendment. Or to before I add my my my, before I submit my amendment. Eh there's a section in in the bill, I'm not sure, it's section ten or eleven, that speaks of, you know, in in the location where you mostly come from. You find that the elderly will wake up very early in the morning at five, go to the clinic to queue for heart pressure medication or chronic medication. Eh, the elderly lady will be there from that time, the op clinic is going to open at at seven o'clock. But she's not going to be assisted then. She'll only leave the clinic at half past three in the afternoon, just waiting for for chronic medication. And that's a sad story that we find ourselves in. So I think the NHI bill will assist in the fact that the section of the bill speaks of how chronic medication will be delivered to the elderly. You know, where they don't have to go and queue eh for so long at clinics for for medication that they can just easily, easily assess. And but my eh, my submission in closing. I want to submit as an, to the bill that, an amendment to the bill that maybe the bill must look at the clinics in our communities. To probably operate at twenty-four hours. You know, eh not just open twenty-four hours, but they must be fully operational eh twenty-four hours. Because you find even currently in our public hospitals, they are open twenty-four hours, but you get there at half past seven in the evening. Believe you me, you're going to see a doctor tomorrow morning at nine. After they are, after they are, they are morning meeting and they are tea breaks. It's only then that you are going to see a doctor at half past nine, where else you arrived half past seven the previous evening. So if we say we want to amend the bill with a a clinic that operates twenty-four hours, it must be fully operational. Whereby we don't sit and wait for services, but as you come in, you are, you are assisted. Eh thank you very much. That will be my submission.
G'day all. My name is Heni Bakker and I work for the organization called Afri Forum. We are a civil rights movement that have two hundred and thirty thousand members funding us at this stage. Now I have a mandate to talk on behalf of all two hundred and thirty thousand members. First of all, I would like to state that we do not support the implementation of the NHI. And I would proudly give you the reasons why. First of all, the speaker up front called the NHI, it's going to be a big bag of money. Now in this country, there are few big bags of money, first of all being Escom, South African Airways. Uh all the state-owned entities are big bags of money, the state own. And it's all gone, it's all stolen, it's missing, we don't know where it is. We've got commissions investigating it all and nothing's coming of it. Escom received another bailout once again. Now, everyone speaking in front of me today has told of medical care, they all want medical care. The NHI is supposed to provide that, but what I don't understand is, there is already medical care in this country, it's already free. The only problem is, it's unfunded because the government does not have the money. Why don't they start fixing the problems inside the government? Why don't you start getting the corrupt people out, stop them from stealing the money and take the money which you are paying in bailouts? And giving that towards the medical systems you now have. You can then fix up hospitals that are not working, you can fix the clinics that are not working. You can employ more doctors, you can employ more nurses, you can even make it open twenty-four hours like the lady in front asked. All you need to do is get corruption out. Now, I've got further reasons why we do not support it. Uh when Mr. Motzaledi said eh NHI is going to be tried in South Africa, people told him um it has never been done before. Now that isn't something that is a good thing, it means we are trying something that hasn't worked before. Why would we want to do that? Rather fix what we have once again. The system is unproven, there is no indication until thus yet how it will be funded and by what. The only thing I can think is that it will be funded by another tax increase that we will have to pay. The taxpayers in this country cannot afford another burden. Ten million taxpayers in this country is currently paying for fifty-eight million citizens. Now, I'm unsure if fifty-eight million includes the people that come from other countries into our borders. I'm I'm unsure if you counted them. This will include them if the NHI gets implemented, we will be paying for everyone. Even if they're from Angola, if they're from Zimbabwe, that won't matter, everyone will pay for them, that's not right. From the year two thousand until two thousand and fifteen, there was little to no improvement in state hospitals. There was an increase in in the amount of hospitals built, but that has helped little. There was four hundred and thirty-six nurses for every one patient in two thousand. Now there's only four hundred and sixteen to every patient. But if you look at the private sector, that was seven hundred to one in the year two thousand. That has been made better and it's now at three hundred and twenty-six to one. That's a massive increase, the private sector works, we cannot stop it. The NHI, like I said, will be another state enterprise that people will be able to loot. Um the biggest problem we've also seen is that in Gauteng alone in twenty-fifth, ah in twenty eighteen, four thousand people died in state-owned hospitals due to negligence. People not getting the help they need, and I think the same thing is happening here in in the Northern Cape. Now, how many more deaths do the government want on its hands? You are playing with people's lives, you are playing with people's futures, you are playing with unborn children at this stage, and they are going to die. We do not support this and will do whatever it takes to stop this bill, even if we have to see you guys in court. Thank you.
Wolweni. Wolweni. Um I'm Rite Reverend DS Franzmann, the chief chaplain of the ANC in the Northern Cape. When the comfort zones of the minority with the deep pockets are rattled, then you are working Baba. When you start to have something that work for the majority of the people, then you are working Baba. And we will stand with you and also with whatever it takes, we will stand with you. We are extremely excited about the NHI roadshows. As those with the deep pockets are advocating against this bill on all kinds of platforms. What informs our excitement as the chaplaincy um about this roadshows is that Hosiah Fowasik says, "My people are destroyed for a lack of knowledge." Your roadshow gives us the opportunity to get understanding and not listen to all these lies that are being advocated on social media. The ANC chaplaincy commend our government of national unity for the vision of a better life for all of us and not only some of us with the deep pockets. Proverbs twenty-nine verse eighteen says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." We thank you eh government of national unity for your vision and for your action. Thomas Jefferson once said, "Our greatest happiness does not depend on the condition of life in which chance has placed us like some with the deep pockets. But it's always the result of good conscience, good health, occupation and freedom in all just pursuits. Keep on pursuing this thing, no matter what they say." We also would like to advocate, uh Chairperson, that the eleven board members must have at least one member from each province. As our experience with other boards like Prasa, et cetera, is that the Northern Cape is being treated like the stepchild of the country and conveniently forgotten when boards are appointed. Please let the Northern Cape have a representative on the board. The Northern Cape ANC chaplaincy therefore supports this bill as the, as as it, as it is an answer to prayers, especially for the poorest of the poor. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm from what the two, what committee? Uh because I have a problem. Because I'm observing many things from the clinic. Eh because there's no doctors, the first thing, the people are waiting for a doctor for a long time. And our nurses, even though our nurses don't work, even they are going to the lounge from their lunchtime. They're taking maybe three hours for 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 two hours. That is a problem for us, it don't work, they don't look after their patients. And the second thing is that uh if you come from two o'clock, you don't work, they don't help you anymore. They say they are off of duty. And we don't know why they say they're off of duty, because they must go off of duty for a clock, they're not two o'clock. They cannot help you, they cannot give you a fine, we don't know why. And the problem is that uh, you know, our our clinic, this is breaking. They must do something about the securities, or the police, they must be there. Because the thief, it's gonna be a thief, it's gonna take something that you want to take. Put the security there or the police to look after uh 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 our medicine. But because this is a very important thing for our lives. That is very important, you must be, look after that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dudu Zilev Voldabias. Um I've heard, um doctor, I heard you talking about the eleven board members and then there'll be a CEO. We are, I don't know if we can look at perhaps having a committee for the province or or people that we can report to. Remember, if we are going to implement it, it will have to be monitored so that we see how, what the type of services we're receiving. If we are happy with the services for purposes of of accountability as well. Secondly, you talked about pricing and thank you very much that the bill also addresses the issue of pricing. Because with medical aids, you'd find that you are charged a certain amount, you pay, and the doctor will say, no, but those are hospital rates. You need to pay over and above the exorbitant amount that we pay. We still need to cough up extra money because people are charging different rates. And I also heard that we are going to, the fund is going to make use of the medical tax credits. I want to en, just to inquire how it will affect the working class. In other words, are we going to be paying more taxes? Is it just going to be taken from the tax credits? How are you going to deal with it in terms of people who are already paying um towards a medical aid? We are going to stop paying that, but how are you going to determine how much we need to pay? And also I want to find out if all healthcare providers, for an example, the local clinics and hospitals, if they are obligated to register so that they can be accredited. And as well, what will the requirements of the accreditation be? Lastly, I just quickly briefly went through the bill. I must say it is an, it's going to alleviate a lot of problems. It's going to alleviate financial burdens for people like us. Because I am a breadwinner. And I I am, I thank you very much for this bill because it really truly is going to assist and put a lot of things for us at ease. I thank you.
Greetings.
Eh we have eh two speakers.
We have two speakers that are to take the podium now. There may be other people that we missed out when we started on both sides. We give this opportunity once more to some of the people who might have come up when we were already starting to join there so that we know we don't have another second round. However, some other people are also allowed to write and submit on the table their wishes. But if there are other people...
Thank you very much. Greetings to all the podium, all protocol observed. My name is Duello Parasi. I stay in Wotsavon, in Wutsesuludi branch. I am the Chairperson also of Young People. Chairperson, I heard you made mention that the bill will cater, of which I applaud it, it will break down the gap between the poor and the rich. I heard that you made mention of it will cater for the elderly and the pregnant women and the children from zero to five. I'm asking myself sitting here as a young person as to now, what about those who will be seven years, eight years up until nine? I didn't hear you clearly, I just heard you just said it will cater for the, for those five years and below and the elderly and so forth. So I just wanted clarity pertaining to that. And mine, I just want to be very much assertive pertaining to this one. The NHI is good, we applaud it. But when one checks it, you know, the doctors that we are currently having, we have a shortage of doctors in the Northern Cape. Then you ask yourself the implementation of NHI. When NHI comes to board, obviously, a GP will leave his office or whatever and now will they be working for the state? You see, but I'm checking now in a sense as to, it seems like it will, this thing, it's some sort of a money, something for them because most of the doctors will be now coming in for this NHI. So I'm asking myself as a person that, you know, we must also check that in line as to now. Even if they are being remunerated, you must check as to now. You know, it must not be too much. Because I'm checking it deeply because of, here currently in the Northern Cape, there's no doctor who wants to go and work in up in them. You see, even now currently at Khalishua Hospital, there's only one doctor. You can even go now. There's one doctor there. So we are having challenges of doctors. Now, the implementation of NHI, it surely means there will be a flocking of doctors. Now everyone will say, "No, it's now the state." I'm asking, my question is, will they be working permanently for the state? Or what method is it going to be implemented? And the other thing that also that I wanted to ask was pertaining to this one. It's about the role of the district health office. Pertaining, we have most three spheres of government. We have the national and the provincial and the local. The implementation of NHI, will it work in synergy with the provincial government alone? How will it be going to be rolled out? That's where I'm... Because of the latter speakers spoke about the issue of corruption and whereby people will fill in their pockets. You see, yes, I'm also standing in that sense as to now, how is it going to be rolled out? Here in the Northern Cape, did the leadership make an overview inspection pertaining to our province as to? Because every province, Dafa. Johannesburg cannot be like Northern Cape. Every province, Dafa. So it must be checked in that sense. So I'm also asking myself now, yes, the NHI is here. Do we have as a state a pharmaceutical company? That's one thing that I'm asking myself now. You see, do we have a pharmaceutical company as a state? Thank you very much.
From nineteen ninety, I don't get past back about the words of letters to bring to, to show the government and say what is going on. Because always, Tabo Makoi was involved to the hospital. The time I take my statement to the hospital. It was a long process. It was a long process to help me out. And I waiting, I say, wait, Prince, things can come right. But things never come right. I'm suffer, how long I must get to work? I haven't got to work too. I haven't got to work. I suffer, my grandmother's house is ugly, still ugly from an apartment house. I stay still in an apartment house now. And the part of this house, you can see my grandmother's house. My grandmother's house is very ugly. You can see why I'm staying, why I'm... You can see my place, where I'm staying. I never know English so good, but I try to explain. You see, but you see, those things in the leaders from us, from Northern Cape. The leaders from Northern Cape don't work someone as cases. The cases from here, I come to ANC office, I'm like a fool about him face. I'm a fool about him face because I'm mad. My mad guy never can stand and talk what happens to me today. That he make me hard, very broken, I work for this struggle very long. From nineteen ninety, for not for me, for us grandmothers. For us grandmothers, us grandmothers, what us grandmothers, what what you ask grandma, that's out to the house, the white man. What you do, grandma, that's out to the... What the white, white, white government. The white government this time was very hard to understand, to explain. And the pay from this time, the pension from the grandmother, your grandmother must take you to the school. There's a leave the school to make crime, to make, to my grandmother, to check after my grandmother. I don't make crime, about crime is crime. I don't make crime, about crime is crime. I make crime about my grandmother suffer. How long my grandmother must suffer? How long me am I suffer? How long I talk about me, I talk about my grandmother? Because I grew me up, I grew me very hard up. I very to see today, my grandmother, I haven't got a deep house, I haven't got nothing. I haven't got the whole house, one room. I stay in the one room, apartment room, house. Till now, I can show anyone to my grandmother's house, you can never believe. But this guy, he strike for the struggle, but he stay like that.
May I request that member just to write down this issue of the problem of the housing and the challenge with the grandmother? And then we will take that because we also must listen both on behalf of provincial and national government such issues, details regarding that. A small intervention, support in that family, that family, that family. Please, let me tell them my details, Waki, please.
Thank you, Chairperson. I think when we start looking at the issue of the NHI, we basically say that it's a good piece of legislation proposed by government as it is and with a couple of amendments as well that. When we start looking into a couple of things in this country, we saw about seven point nine million people on medical aids. Versatile population of almost fifty-nine million drans in this country. And you start looking into the whole scenario there, you said to yourself that that's complete madness of a certain few people being on medical aids. Whether beneficiary of the disadvantaged communities, still today they're being very much opposed to this bill, which tells that that's madness. Where we're coming across basically currently now, we're having a look at what is currently happening in terms of gender-based violence in this country. And it serves ourselves that this type of legislation will be able to empower women to the base of better healthcare into this country. It will be able to empower young children into this province that who can get better healthcare in a way that is supposed to happen around currently dealing with issues as well that. Where we're coming to, we're also having a look there at chapter four of the Act, of the proposed legislation, we basically say that where the board said there should be eleven representatives, we believe that that is really looked at and a clause that ended on chapter four where that provincial representation needs to be there, where at least one member of a province needs to be representative into this process that we need to be dealing, into the board. We further say that in the same clause, all MECs must be ex officia members of this board to sit with that. The executive powers needs to be looked upon and then to look into issues as well when it comes to draft legislation, when it comes to places as well that. When we then look then into... When I look then into one of the chapters there and chapter seven as well that, we are also basically saying that when we start looking at the issue of appointment of advisory committees, we need to have a balanced flow of advisory committees. Where that we also have to see that provincial representation needs to be there. And provincial representation in the sense that the MEC must have a person to be appointed who will be able to serve the interests of each and every province when it comes to as well that. So when we start looking to dynamics of that, we'll be in the way we can engage then provincial dynamics when it comes to NHI. Because at the end of the day that we need to understand the needs of this province and the financial capabilities when needs analysis is to be done on a provincial level. So those inputs needs to be done and basically say that it will give a better perspective of the issue of the NHI as in the provincial level and at a national level as well that. From our side and from North African against gender-based violence, we're basically saying that we are in total support then of the draft legislation. Thank you, Chair.
I'm Rudy Krueger. I'm from Ritschi, Mother of Fire. And I'm here today on the National Health Insurance National Health Insurance Bill in Sathalewa. The national health insurance with the time of our President Nelson Mandela with the alliance partners. It was agreed that every African will better health insurance get. And I read the bill, very carefully. Very carefully read. My question is, the National Health Insurance, is it for people who are in disadvantaged communities? People who can be cost to? Now I can understand that the insurance is for workers, people who can be cost to. Because, as I understand, is that the insurance, the health insurance is for people who can't be cost to, what a doctor or a specialist need. Now I can agree that the one side of the people have medical schemes. Now they are afraid of the medical schemes they must be accredited so that the medical schemes can also pass here and here the National Health Insurance. And that can advance. The companies contribute more than they can. So the companies must look at the people. The National Health Insurance is a speech for people who can't be cost to. Now, as I can understand, if I'm unlucky or I can't win it, I must medical cry. I must pay to order a medical health insurance. But now I think, I'm a worker. The National Health Insurance is most of my because I can't afford it. I see that for people who can't afford it. Yeah, it's right. This is a deal of the speeches that are made with the alliance partners only for the government of national unity. But we want to look at that. It's not for pregnant women and children, it's for everybody in South Africa. Because I say, it's not for pregnant women and children, who can make it for the refugees accommodation. So the bill must be made as it are for people from overseas, refugees, Kita. They must have every land burger available. They must not be secure for people. They must, the rich ones will benefit. As I can understand, so comrades, compatriots, go back, discuss the bill, look where you voted. But as I understand, is that the bill is not for people who can't afford it, the armors of the armors. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rudy Kruger and I'm from Ritschi. I am here today to speak about the NHI bill. National healthcare was in the time of Nelson Mandela and the alliance partners, it was discussed that every South African would get better healthcare. I skimmed through this bill and what I discovered or what I think about this is that this bill is supposed to address the needs of the poorer community. But the insurance, it seems as through the discussions what is being said, the insurance is for people who can afford it. I understand that this assistance is supposed to go for the people who cannot afford healthcare, not where medical aid schemes must also be brought into this whole thing. Because there, as I understand it, medical aid schemes must now be accredited so that they can also become part of the NHI. In the matter of people who are employed, surely the employer must look after the employees. And that is why the NHI should be for the poorer community who are unemployed and who cannot afford healthcare. Before the Government of National Unity, there was the discussion about the healthcare that was going to be for everyone in the country, especially those, the poorer community. But my other comment here is, as I've listened to what the Chairperson said, it seemed that he said that this national healthcare is for pregnant women, for children and also for refugees and foreigners. And if that is the case, then everyone in the country should benefit from the NHI, all South Africans, even those who can afford to get, to pay for their own medical healthcare. And that is why I am appealing to you to re-look at this matter. Thank you.
As members of parliament, we come to these meetings to listen and write down and record. Honorable members, I was phoned by another journalist and the first question that journalist asked me, "Why did you close the meeting early? The meeting was supposed to close at half past eight." I said, "No, we had opened up a meeting to go up to half past eight in the event people wanted to ask." If people finish early, it's not like this is an IEC where we are waiting for people to come in here and vote. So up to eight o'clock, we'll open the doors. We had opened up a meeting to start at half past four and people came and they made their contributions. We want to thank you, MEC, for being here because we always say... because we always say this, we have got two in one. We have got members of our community who have been commenting about the NHI bill, but also some of them were very vocal about certain challenges that are there in health. Now, this committee might ask you to visit us in Cape Town. To say, on the first of November, we were in Kimberley Hall, town hall, people said this, 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 how far have you gone with those issues? Because we need to continue to give you hope. Your presence here unfortunately and the national department is not to comment, answer, but you get a chance the other day to answer. We thank you South Africans for being here in this meeting. We are going on to other places. We are collecting all the views of South Africans. For us is to analyze all of them and present them to the entire leadership of parliamentarians. They debate it and we take it forward. But your presence here is important. It has added a voice. This is how laws are made into the country. You get a particular department or an individual with a particular view, which is a bill, and it goes into becoming a law through this participation. So your contribution is highly valued. We thank you so much and thanks for the, Honorable Sochara for opening up with a prayer. I don't know whether we'd like to close with a prayer. Mama Muang asked me the other day, why did you open with a prayer? Didn't want to close with a prayer? Now, I didn't know what to say. Now, because now she's, there's a man of God there, a man of the cloth. Please close with a prayer and we will then finish with the meeting.
Can we just stand for prayer? Our Father who art in heaven, it's in the name of Jesus that we come to your throne. We thank you for your goodness, your mercy and your grace. We thank you, Father God, that you in your wisdom have allowed these representatives from parliament to come to us and engage us. We pray, Father God, that you will give them health and strength to continue, Father God, getting the views of South Africans across the country. We also pray, Father God, wherever they go, that you will keep them safe. Father, we pray that your safe-traveling mercies will go with them. We also pray, Father God, for each and every South African who needs good health, that needs health services. We pray, Father God, that our health system would be so much in place that no one is excluded. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Come and bless us now further, Father God, as a city, as a province, and help us, Father God, and bind us together with cords of love that cannot be broken. We ask this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, our pastor forgot to pray for the springbok. Let us all, as we pray, as we go home, pray for the springbok tonight.